On the agenda is public comment. Is there a public comment tonight? Nope. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We're gonna pull out the fourth item on the consent agenda, which is the new teacher contract, and we'll take that up after the executive session tonight. There have been a couple of additions, which are new teacher contracts, is that what the additions were? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the new teacher contract and with the new teacher hires added tonight?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the additions mentioned by Bridgette just now.
And minus the...
And minus the contract negotiations.
Second?
Second.
Who was in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Because we approved the tax anticipation note, we need five signatures on that, so I'm just gonna be passed around here.
I apologize, it's three separate pages.
Oh, three pages? So when it comes to you, you could sign it? Okay. Learning focus?
Oh, wait, actually, before we get to that, which is appropriate because we're gonna turn it over to Emma and Hope, I did wanna say that this is our last regular school board meeting of the school year, which means it's the last time that we'll be joined by two of our favorite graduating seniors, Emma and Adam, who's been with us for years, so we wish you guys all the very, very best. We wish you very much and thank you for all the service that you've done for board. Anyone else want to say something?
Congratulations.
Yeah, I second that, thank you too so much.
Thank you. All right, turn it over to you.
So, we're just gonna format it with celebrations and concerns. I can start. So, we recently had the Empower Vermont Festival in this very courtyard, and it was sponsored by MHS Club Action, and the proceeds went to the Sexual Assault Crisis Team of Washington County, and we wanted to give back to a more like local group, and we felt it was really befitting of the name Empower Vermont. And we had music and some speeches, and Emma was also there, and so I know that she had a really good time, and people tabling, and yeah, it was just a good way to bring the student body together a bit. And...
Also, can I just add that the students that worked on the Empower Vermont Festival worked so hard, and it was a small group of students, and I thought it was like so much fun, so congrats to them. Oh, and so the end of spring sports is officially tomorrow, I think, and that's ending with the finals games, which both are varsity ultimate teams are participating in here, so that's really exciting.
Emma is on the girls' ultimate team. She's a star.
And also, all of our other teams have done really well this year in spring sports, so yeah, just congratulations to them as well.
I heard you had a pep rally for spring sports.
Yes. That was the next item, actually. So, it sort of took so much effort to plan it, but I know that some members of student council worked like really, really hard to try and organize the pep rally, and it was outside, and it was by the track, and I know that our school doesn't... Our school had a pep rally this past year, and it was pretty small, and so it was short, and so I know that like we're really trying to build up our school spirit as a way to just bring the student body together a little bit more, and get them out for games, and just to like make them feel proud of going to MHS, and so we had relay race and tug-of-war between faculty and staff and students, which was really interesting, and I... I had fun, Emma had fun, everyone else seemed like they were having fun, so just say that. Yeah, it went really well, and we even decorated the hallways a bit for it.
Yeah, and today was Senior Day of Service. That was a lot of fun. I know that some people got injured here and there, just like some... Just me, it was just me.
Some people.
I'm just joking, I'm just joking, it's just a band, it's okay. No, no, no. But we cleaned up the basement of the elementary school. I haven't been there in a long time, that was really fun. No, I... And you know, the custodial staff there, like I just have so much respect for everything that they do. That was a lot of work, and they were there like loading up the trailer and running to wherever they're taking all of that stuff, so that was awesome to see. And there is...
Fun.
The fire was...
Crackling.
Crackling, and pizza was baking, and it was great, yeah.
And tomorrow after school, something that... It's a partnership between, I think it's Community-Based Learning and some of the classes at MHS, and the Vermont Folk Life Center, and another organization, I forget the name, but it's called the Blueprints Project, and I'm part of it, and I'm one of the only not sophomores who's a part of it, because it's mostly sophomore classes, and then orchestra, which I'm a part of, and we basically had to schedule a 30-minute interview with someone in the community, and it was more of a casual sort of interview, in which we would just choose a topic we wanted to talk to them about, and then just sort of connect with community members, and I was able to interview the legislator that I interned with, Molly Burke, and it was really, it was just really nice to be able to connect with her on her upbringing and her career. And after we had those interviews, we turned, we sort of turned them into art, and it was based on what class you were in, and I know some people made maps, sort of like their art project was maps, and for me and for orchestra students and some other students, we had to make a song on GarageBand, so we had to make music, and so the exhibition for that will be tomorrow night at 5:00, I believe, I'm not entirely sure, but it's tomorrow night, and it'll be in the library and I think Ms. Squire's room, so that's exciting.
You're on the art walk. You're in the book on the art walk for tomorrow. So, you know, the art walk, so you go to various places, and you're on...
Oh, that's really cool.
The Blueprints.
I didn't... Okay, cool.
I think that's on Montpelier Alive's website.
Right.
I didn't know that.
You're there.
We are there. Good to know.
Okay, so we just have a few concerns. I'll just talk about some middle school concerns that I've run into during play mentoring. So, I don't have any hard data to like present to you, I don't have any like surveys or anything, so I can't say that this is like a shared experience, but I do know that there's some concern about the middle school bathrooms, that the gender-neutral bathrooms took only the girls' bathrooms, and that the boys' bathrooms are all still like where they used to be and everything, and if a girl, say, feels uncomfortable going into a gender-neutral bathroom, which is, which might happen, then she would have to walk to wherever that is in the school, and that reminds me of something that Michelle said a long time ago at another meeting about a concern that a parent, I think, had about that, and yeah, and a student brought that up with me, so there's that. And also, at the beginning of this year, there is a, there's some resistance against the dress code at the middle school with the, I think it's, there's some critiques about how it targets the female students, or female identifying students more heavily than the male identifying students, whether that's with like their skirt length or their spaghetti straps, stuff like that. And basically, I think it would be really great to have some MSMS students come to a school board meeting and talk about that, because it seems like something that they really care about. In fact, they even started a petition that got a lot of support to change the dress code, but they ended up not presenting it to the administration, so yeah. And then, moving on to Montpelier High School. Do you want to talk about this?
Sure. I know that some recent freshmen, I think they brought it up to Emma or something, or how it... Yeah, some freshmen who had just recently been through the health class at MHS had some concerns about it, and I, I think they're concerns that I share and Emma might share, just in that it, it's hard to explain, but I just think it needs a lot of work, and I think Emma can talk a bit more about that.
Yeah, what we discussed, so one of the places that I talked about this, I talked about this with Club Action, actually, which is an activism club, so that's, yeah. Basically, they were concerned about the curriculum not being adequate, just especially in terms of sex education and inclusivity and like equity around gender identities and sexual orientations, which is stuff that I, we have discussed on the board, I believe. And so I'm just kind of like echoing that, because students seem to wanna prioritize that, or they want the school board to prioritize that.
Yeah, I feel like it's been, there's sort of a general consensus that if there is a class at MHS that needs improvement, it's health, just from people who've been through it years ago, and are people who just went through it, like the freshman, and just to add, like when I went through it, my main two concerns were sort of inclusivity in terms of different identities that are represented and have to be educated in that space, and also sex education, and I think it's lacking from what we have right now. Room for improvement.
So, yeah, any questions are welcome.
Any questions for discussion?
No questions, but we did spend, I wanna say, an hour at the last meeting, hearing from a couple of parents and from Mike McGrath and the other Mike.
Yeah, I don't wanna over... Isn't Mike working on the health curriculum now?
Our curriculum director is working on it.
Our next meeting is about health, too, isn't it?
The next meeting?
Isn't our retreat has a...
No.
No? I thought that was one of the things we were talking about.
No, one of the actions that came out of the admin's talk after the last board meeting is that one of the things we'd like to do is do with a health index that we have, and that's a much longer process. So, we're looking into how do we start that, who do we need to do that with us, and all that kind of thing.
We were talking about an asset map to show...
Which is gonna do that, it does the same thing, except it's already a published document that goes further than what we would probably do, just brainstorming, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So yeah, that's what we're on to.
Cool.
We just need a little time to gather it.
What is an asset map in a health index?
So, an asset map is, so a lot of times in community development, people talk about communities' needs, and an asset map is a different way of approaching a community problem, where you start with, what do we have, you know, what are our strengths, what are our assets, you know, what are the resources that we currently have available, and not necessarily within an institution, but surrounding an institution, so a community, what are the community's assets, and in that process, oftentimes, when it's used as a community development tool, you realize, oh, we have all these resources, but we're only engaging this resource and this resource here, but we could be engaging all of these resources, or, oh, there's a gap here, this is where we really have a need, kind of thing, that helps decision-makers and implementers in communities address challenges.
It can also help you sometimes focus the community's efforts on real problems versus perceived problems, if you, if you can map it out, because you might, like, we might be putting tons of resources into an anti-smoking program, and if we did an asset map, it would be like, hey, we're the school in the state with the fewest smoking kids, maybe we should put our efforts somewhere else.
Yeah, not into our strengths.
What we have is from the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control Prevention, and it's the School Health Index, and it's a self-assessment, assessment, and planning guide, so it will take us through a process. So, right now, it's a little packed with to-dos. Everybody's like, so this is marked for summer work.
But Mike Berry said is working on the health curriculum for K-12?
It's on the docket, so one of the things that Mike said to me after the board meeting was, we don't have a reading curriculum, and we don't have a writing curriculum, and we don't have a math curriculum, like it's on the docket to work on, and he's meeting with teachers, and we have a lot of curriculum work to do. It's not a but, it's a and, we have a lot of work to do in that area, because we have very little, especially in the K-4 spectrum.
On the middle school bathrooms, there is a big bathroom renovation project going on this summer, right?
Yes.
But that will mean more gender-neutral bathrooms, I think, right?
Yes. I don't know specifically which bathrooms they're concerned with, and I, but I think that you're right, on one of the floors, I think what they did is they took the boys, they left the boys, and they turned the girls into a gender-neutral, is that correct?
That's the one by the gym.
And that's getting, that one's getting renovated into an all-gender neutral, as well as the ground floor, but there'll also be an individual stall, individual toilet.
But one of the things that Pam had said at a previous meeting, and I just wanna confirm this with you, Andrew, while you're here, is that there still will be, for those students, female identifying and male identifying, who wish to use a female or male restroom, those will still be available, correct? It's not all gonna be gender-neutral.
Not on that floor.
So on one floor, it'll be all gender-neutral, but in the building...
They will see a single stall somewhere. I mean, a single bathroom somewhere.
Correct.
So they can go into the single bathroom.
I don't know the individual, you know, I don't know the building well enough, that there's an individual room tucked down a hallway kind of thing, that I can't, I don't have a plan in front of me. The way that they'll be set up is the, the restrooms will be a large restroom, you'll actually go through a solid door, so you'll enter into the room, there'll be a row of sinks, common area sinks, and then you actually go through a solid wood door into a toilet stall, but it's more of a room, the walls go up to about eight feet, seven and a half feet, and then, and so those will be all individual, and then there'll actually be a handicap-accessible, solid, freestanding room that will be, it'll be, it won't be gender-identifiable, it'll just be a standalone one.
Will there be gender-identifiable bathrooms still at the school?
There may be one or two, but not in the, not as the common, the used ones. And the only reason I say that is there may be, you know, in a library or something, a small restroom tucked off to the side, but when I think of the sort of main restrooms that'll be used, no, they'll all be gender-neutral. I'll have to pull up the plans and double-check that, but...
I've heard those same concerns from some parents and their kids, too. Mainly, actually, and this is all anecdotal, it's just been the parents of some girls who feel uncomfortable going into a gender-neutral setting at the middle school.
I have to say, as a woman who often has to wait in long lines for waiting for a women's toilet to open up, that I find it a little, my whole life, the idea that somehow I'm gonna lose even more stalls to boys who wanna use a gender-neutral bathroom, a little bit of a lack of planning, if anything, women need more bathroom space than men do, so that the women's room is the one that was taken up to become the gender-neutral.
They're all the gender-neutral. One on a floor, and I honestly don't know how many years ago that happened, I think it probably happened three, four years ago.
Okay, all right.
This was a decision that was made before this full year.
Yeah, okay, must've missed it.
It's because of the urinals, too.
I understand.
You can't make the boys neutral.
There will be some individual bathrooms though around the school, so...
Thank you. All right, the next issue on the agenda is the discussion of the mud lot. We have Grant Geisler and Andrew LaRosa joining us, business manager and facilities director, to talk about the mud lot.
You're gonna have to hold.
It's okay. It's okay. Stay inside. Take a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
So, good evening. Yes, so this is both of us, because kind of a two-part thing, but I'm technically asking for is a fund balance adjustment, so I'm asking for a motion eventually to increase the committed fund balance to $664.115. That is an increase of $350,000. That $350,000 is what I would like to commit and set aside for a project to actually replace the mud lot with an actual paved parking lot.
And it could be either one of you, just like a 60-second explanation for the public about what the mud lot refers to.
Right, so as you're pulling into the high school, kind of on the outside of where the auditorium is, there's a kind of a parking lot, but it's not paved, it's just dirt, some gravel, but we call it the mud lot, because in a lot of seasons, that's what it is, just mud. So it's used a lot for overflow, it's also used right now for the bank, the VSECU uses it for their overflow parking. It's been a discussion for a long time that that is an eyesore, needs to be paved and look nice. For a while, we were in discussions with the VSECU, because they were thinking about making it a capital project that they would pay for, and it would be this long-term agreement would have to work out, because it's our property, that they would be doing this project, and so that would give them the ability to use it for several years for free. But they, VSECU delayed their project, and now it's sounding less and less like they're really going to move forward, but I think they've got other priorities, perhaps the parking lot's becoming expensive than they anticipated. So right now, there is no immediate plan for VSECU to do a parking lot project anymore. So we could just keep waiting, but it's, it's been something that's needed attention for a long time. So I was looking to set aside $350,000, and your board packet, there were a couple of kind of drawings, well, one was a couple of pictures of the mud lot, what it looks like now, but you all have seen it, you know what it's like. The second kind of diagram was this big parking lot that was initially planned, that would take up almost all that green space, we're not talking about doing that. The last page was kind of what VSECU was considering, which is basically paving the same kind of footprint as the mud lot, not encroaching on the green fields. That's more like what we're talking about doing, but I'm not here to tell you that we have a firm plan set in place, we need to figure out what we're gonna do, it'll probably be more like the VSECU plan, but credit union, yeah, but we still have to kind of go through some of the details and figure that out. But the reason why I'd like to commit money now is, in order to do that work, we're gonna need some design and engineering money to start figuring out exactly what this is gonna look like. So if we set that money aside, it would be available, we could have some seed money to start with the planning and development of it, and then at some point, you will all get more information about what we actually plan to do when that time comes. So like I said, for now, I was just looking for a motion to increase the committed fund balance, we still have over 2.4% of our budget is fund balance, uncommitted fund balance, so we're still in good shape. I've talked to a few of you, especially on the finance committee, that I anticipate this year, we're gonna add to the fund balance as a result of how we finish up on that team. So I think we're in good shape. This makes a lot of sense to me, but obviously, the expert is to my left, so if you have questions about the lot itself, I'm sure Andrew will be pleased to speak with you.
Do we wanna hear from Andrew?
I think Grant covered it, so I mean, I'll answer.
Start from Sean. Then I'll look at that side of it.
I'm just gonna recuse myself from the conversation, because friends of the Winuski, where I work, is working with the district on the stormwater management of this lot.
So that gets into a question that I had, which is, you know, we're adding impervious surface to an area by a waterway that goes into Lake Champlain.
Do you want me, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, so I was like, how...
I think that, I'll take the burden here, I think that by most consideration, that would be considered impervious surface. We've been driving on it, compacting it for the last...
Oh, right now, you mean?
Yeah, and if it was 10 years ago, I would've absolutely said, there's no one in the state that wouldn't call that impervious, as I get the understanding, they're loosened up a little bit, but still, I think on first blush, people would say, you've been driving on it for five years, that's impervious.
Okay.
Now, I also understand that the state is also more flexible about regenerating. It used to be, once it was impervious, it was never going to not be considered that, but my understanding is that now you could actually fluff the soil back up and turn it back into impervious surface.
But you have to stop driving on it.
But you have to stop driving on it.
So what is, what is the need for this? Because we have, we have parking lots all around the school, what is, what is the need for this lot? You know, when I go by in the day, it seems like a lot of folks who are doing construction are using it right now, but I don't necessarily see that lot totally full regularly, but this is anecdotal, so that's why I'm asking.
I would say that, and we haven't done a formal study of this, but again, anecdotal, in talking with folks, that last I talked with Steve Avery, I think he said he got about eight folks from the credit union who were parking over there on a regular basis. So on any given day, there's probably 20 people parked out there when construction's not happening. About eight of those are probably credit union folks. The number of students and faculty is very small, four, five, six, maybe, with everybody's coming through the front door. The balance are people using the bike path or using the green space.
So we're talking about $350,000 plus ongoing maintenance and repair over time, not that we don't have maintenance and repair right now, for potentially 12 people who may or may not be using the school. I'm, you know, I do see our schools as a public asset, but also, there are state, there's a state law, Department of Labor, that generally has quite a bit of spaces. There's also a rec field area that is right near, right near where the bike path is, so it seems like VSECU, they're using about 40% of those spaces. Do they pay us anything?
They pay us a nominal...
Yeah, it's a very small amount, something like that, but that's based on that it's a mud lot. And I do, there are times when there is no parking house out here, in the paved lots. I can attest to that myself, because I've come to work, if I'm, like, if I leave and come back, there are no spots. So there is a need, and I wonder about, as we get more high school students from Roxbury, if we're gonna end up having even more students driving. So yeah, right now, it's not an urgent need, but we're also not talking about putting a parking lot out there with 100 spaces, we're talking about just probably about, maybe 40 spaces, maybe. So it's not adding a lot of parking spaces, but one way or another, something needs to be done with that. It's the first thing you see when you pull in, and it's atrocious.
Well, I was gonna say, it's actually used quite a bit on weekends, of various things, when something happens. So if we're not gonna pave it, let's put grass on it and prevent people from driving on it. It sort of has to go one or the other, 'cause it's so ugly.
I certainly like the green space approach, like when I look at these drawings, my question is with regard to the $350,000 parking lot.
Absolutely, I get it.
If we had, if we put trees, if we had another recreational field there, had walkways that weren't muddy in the winter or spring at all.
We've talked about that piece, 'cause when the credit union pulled out, the three of us were sitting in my office, it happened to be a day that that lot was closed, because it's closed for several months of the year because of ice, or mud, one of the two, and we couldn't find parking. There are multiple people coming to the high school that couldn't find park, because all the parking spots, especially in the winter. parking spots, especially in the winter, when the snow piles and you lose additional parking along the drive there, at least we did this year, I don't know if that's always a common thing because of how it's planted, you know what I mean, where you parallel park? And so, it may have been that we went in this direction because on that day, multiple people were complaining about no parking, but that day is common in Vermont.
Did we do anything to encourage carpooling, like at the state level, for example, they have like the Go Commuter Challenge, and like you get discounts at local restaurants and stores and things like that, if you commute? We probably don't do anything like that, right, to cut down on the number of students?
No, whose job would you like to make that, like you'd like to add that on to? That's gonna be difficult, that's gonna be a difficult stuff.
I will tell you that, even if we, something needs to be done.
Right.
Whatever we do is not gonna be cheap. If you're saying, let's turn it into a grass field, that's still gonna be probably well over $100,000, just because of having to get everything out of there, all the issues you have with, with urban soils, and it's still, it may not be $100,000, but it would still be a sizable amount of money to convert it back to green.
Yeah, we're not gonna just put a chain up and grass is brown.
No, I figured.
But I think, but I would agree with Grant that to make it look good, we'll have to go in there, we'll have to scrape six inches of soil off, and that will probably have to go up to Coventry, and we'll get some topsoil, and ideally, we'll get some trees out there. But I'm thinking, it's not, we're not gonna just pull it out of our pockets, but it's gonna be probably even closer to like $30,000 range, my guess, and if you, if we do decide, all right, we've got this green space, and we've got new sculpture going out front, and we wanna do a few other things, that, you know, that scope can grow or shrink.
Andrew, I don't know if you answered this question, because we didn't dive into the green space idea very much, but would you still have to have a fire lane?
We would still have a fire lane, that's true too. So, we would have to construct, if we wanted that to be green, so that's where that comes.
Could you have a walkway that connects the school to the path there, that was large enough?
We've talked about that, and the, my concern with that is, that field gets used for start smart baseball and stuff like that. Once you put a strip of asphalt through, or a strip of concrete through, you kind of ruin your field, so. But if we were going to do with some sort of engineered grass path for the fire lane, I think we absolutely would be, it'd be easy enough to do that sort of treatment, at least, you know, for the first 50 feet into the site, to know, you know, where, before traffic starts to lessen a little bit, people start to go in different directions a little bit. But that's a, that's a good point, that some sort of structural grass out there, structural system underneath the grass would be a good idea to help make that path a little more sturdy.
My 5,000-foot perspective is, I'm sympathetic to folks who are looking for parking spaces and have things to do throughout the day, and come in the middle of the day, especially the folks who are working here and our students, but I definitely do think in this age of climate change, when the state's actively seeking to reduce its carbon footprint and transportation and heating, or major areas, I just kind of question, if we have $350,000, if spending it on a parking lot is the best use of that money, when maybe it could be going to something, projects at the middle school that we've heard require a lot of attention and those types of matters, so that's my general thought, I don't wanna take up too much time from everybody else, because I saw questions over there.
Sure, I'll just ask a quick clarifying question, so when the credit union had their engineers come up with this plan, this study, what was the price tag?
It was about $300,000 in construction, and I think the engineering fees were gonna be around 25, and then I, we juiced it up a little bit for permitting and things of that nature, so you don't really, and as part of the overall storm waters, you know, we have to get a little more creative than what they originally budgeted on the back of an outfit.
But 350 could get us that?
Something close to it, yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing is, we did, the credit union pays us a very nominal fee now. When they were debating doing this project, because they were gonna pay for capital expense, they were gonna use it for free for years until $300,000 was kind of equaled out. But if we do this ourselves, and they still wanna use that parking, we would significantly increase the amount that we charge for parking to recoup some of that money. Now, what's the average for a parking spot?
Well, a winter spot in Montpelier is about $100 bucks a month.
So, if you do 12, then you're talking $1,200.
That's a 24-hour space.
Take a long time, that gives 350.
I mean, it'd be less than that, but we would be raising a considerable amount from them, and I would assume they would still want to use it.
Yeah, I talked to Steve, and they said that I floated, I didn't wanna catch them watching it on TV, that we're taking their parking lot away, and the idea of renting spaces from them seems, Steve was perfectly.
So, one concern that we have to think about, you know, if there's consideration of not having to be a parking lot, is that that's actually removing parking spots from Montpelier, which I think is a problem.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, could you say?
If we decided to transform it into green space, that's effectively removing parking spaces from downtown Montpelier that are currently being used, including by downtown employees, so it's just gonna add to the parking crunch. And I take Andrew's point that maybe that's not our financial responsibility, but it is not gonna be popular to remove.
While we're building a huge parking garage downtown.
Maybe.
And we are not, and like I said, what we're considering is, we would put paving pretty much on the space that is currently a mud lot, so we're not talking about adding spaces in case people are thinking, well, you're gonna add a parking lot. We're not adding a parking lot, we're taking something that's a muddy lot and an eyesore and creating a true parking lot with lines, that isn't gonna be an eyesore. But, I mean, if you wanna go in a different direction, we can certainly do that, but I just think we need to set aside some money and do something.
Katrina? I was gonna ask, having heard all that, for a little more data. In other words, where's the proof that we need it, except on the day you talked about it? I mean, what's the, do we have any data that says, we actually do need this, or we're in trouble? How would we get that? And so, I'm a little hesitant with Andrew to put this money into a parking lot that the credit union's gonna use.
Well, I think he's gonna pay for it, though, just.
Even so, although I'm absolutely all for doing something with that mess, so yes, I think we need some money to do something, but I'm wishing now I knew a little bit more about, do we really think we need that parking? Or could we do green space? And could we find that out?
I think if you consider, when it's mud and ice, which I, from my short time this year here, that has been at least two months, if not three, full-time periods, we lose, and if it's snowbank time, right, we lose approximately 40 to 50 parking spots. So, that means our employees can't park here, for the most part. Not everybody can fit with students and with the employees, and if we have district days, there's not a chance that all of our employees can park here.
Okay.
So, if that's, you know, it's debatable, is that important enough? That is absolutely debatable, is that, is parking spots a right? It's hard to collect data because we don't assign parking spots.
So, there's a period in the winter, this two, three, three-month period, where it can't be used essentially?
Spring, winter, yeah.
And there are other spots that can't be used because?
During the winter, yes, because of how they cloud the parking, and maybe that can be fixed, I don't know.
Yeah, it could be better next year, I mean, to be blunt, we will not build our way out of a parking problem. We will be here in five years, if we build a parking lot out there, we'll be here in five years saying there's no parking, because people will, who otherwise might not park in the park, in the mud lot, will say, hey, there's a new parking spot, I'm gonna park there to use the bike path, or use whatever, I mean, it's, it's, we don't have a lot of control over our parking lot, we don't, we've got probably six cars that show up, to eight cars that show up on any given school day to play pickleball in the middle of the day.
And get mad at us if they don't have a parking spot, and they blow us out.
So, it's not, it's not an easy, it's not an easy topic, because as I say, it's funny, a lot of cities now, when you build a hotel, and I think Burlington is going this way, they don't have parking requirements, because they know, no matter what you build, you don't have to build enough, so they make it so tough that people will be forced to carpool, because they know they can't find a parking spot. Like I say, that doesn't make the conversation any easier, the decision-making any easier, but if we knew that we had 20 public folks from the, on a nice sunny day like today, 10 of them going for a walk there, or using the bike path, or playing pickleball, that's 20 spots, but for those 20 spots, what do we do about those?
So, there's no decal, or there's not?
There is a control. And we certainly could, I mean, we certainly, we could, these guys don't, we could certainly make a more stringent parking piece, right, for next school year to collect, to be able to collect data, because we don't currently, right? Somebody would have to do that, which is fine, we can make that, yeah, we can make that happen.
You could use an automated system, you could use like a laser system of sorts, probably.
A laser system?
Maybe that wouldn't work, maybe. Like, I mean, our state Forest and Parks Service uses that on trailheads, for example.
To count people.
To count people, and there are parking facilities that use similar automated systems.
Okay. I don't know.
I know in Essex, we, at the high school in Essex, they have parking permits.
Stairs, yeah.
And they actually charge people for their parking permits, because they have to print them out, they have to maintain a roster, and linking that to the cars, so they know whether it's legit. We had two part-time parking lot attendants, and we would go out there and check, and call tow trucks, and have people tow it away, and it was.
Super fun.
I see that as a community relations nightmare right there.
So, backing up again, just to touch here, Andrew, in the past, you've talked about putting together a capital plan, because we now have capital funding.
There is an ongoing capital plan, yeah.
How, where does this fall in the priorities of the capital plan?
It doesn't, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna take anything off of, that capital plan is, that's really infrastructure stuff that's needed, that's been perhaps deferred, and we built that, and we didn't have this in the plan, because we thought it was gonna be done for us. And so, to your point about priority, we didn't see this as, wow, this is a higher priority than what we've already got on our capital plan, and this amount is more than a full year of our capital plan, so we would defer a year and a third worth of requirements if we were to squeeze this in to the capital plan.
No, that's not what I'm suggesting.
So, I did, no, no.
I was saying, we could use this for those capital plan projects, is what I was thinking.
You mean, if we didn't put a parking lot in here?
Yeah.
Because we do have a capital plan, FY '22, $260,000, and it's projected to go up to maybe $5,000 or $10,000 each year. We just started, this is the first year that we voted for the capital plan, we did have a capital plan, capital fund project in FY '19 as well. So, we do have an ongoing capital fund that we've started building, that we're tweaking, and this was kind of late to the party, and we didn't see it as being important enough to bump anything else off the list in the capital fund.
No, I listened to the suggestion, I, what I was thinking is, if we have $350,000 that we wanna spend on capital construction, have we considered where this falls in the priorities of our capital plan?
That's a question I probably should be asking you guys.
It's a question, kind of, for the whole group.
I mean, I look at, you know, the spaces around the middle school and think that that could be a priority for outdoor space than like Trump having a parking lot.
The repairs at the middle school, like basketball court and all that, that's in next year's capital plan.
But if you bumped it up a year?
It won't be built until next year.
Okay, okay.
How much would it cost to get two plans? You said, this wasn't our plan, this was their plan, and how much would it cost to get a plan for a parking lot, but also to get a plan for a green space? This is gonna cost more than I look like, I know it already, but to get those two plans, if we say we have to do something, right, one thing or another, how much would it cost to get those two, and then for the board to continue this discussion about which of those to do?
It would not, it would not take a lot. I guess my question would be, would that information help make the decision?
That's a good question.
Because it sounds like you're pretty clear that parking is about $350,000, and green space is significantly less.
And again, those, the more money you spend to find out what you wanna do, the better the number you can get, and the better you can understand it. I could have, I could call a civil engineer tomorrow and say, we got 8,000 square feet, we wanna scrape, but I could talk to ECI tomorrow during our construction meeting and say, scrape off six inches, and put down topsoil, and grass seed, what's that gonna cost us? And you'd have a number for us by the afternoon.
And nice trees.
What's that?
And nice trees.
And nice trees, but what is that?
And a fire lane.
And, you know, the back of the envelope stuff can be generated, but.
But you're right.
If it was 200, if the differential was $200,000, would that change people's minds?
Probably not, because that isn't what we've been talking about, particularly about the money, except that we'd spend it some other way, but we didn't spend it.
You know, since the credit union is such an integral part to this whole discussion, you know, you said anecdotally, Steve has mentioned to you that, yes, they'll be interested in the future in continuing to use the spaces, and they would probably pay more, have we thought about having a conformal lease that they're willing to commit to, you know, 10 years of paying this amount, or?
We have, we have an agreement with them now that we'll have to discontinue, and then we would have to create a new one, that yes, we certainly would.
So, there is a, okay, I didn't realize that there's a binding agreement already.
Yeah, we were looking at adjusting that, if they were to do the project, so that we could get that all in writing, but then that kind of fell through. So, what we would have to do is, we would have to notify them that we would wanna discontinue, the agreement is in place, because there's a termination amount, or a termination period of time, and we would do that, and then we would do the project, and then we would do a new agreement with them at a higher price per space.
And that would be, and that decision to let them know is November 1st, there are about 60 days, but by November 1st, we need to, if we are going to change our agreement with them, we need to let them know, and ideally, consider them that, so we can.
So, I think I need to get a sort of sense of the board, because this discussion started with an ask for a specific action, and I'm hearing a lot of interest in more information or more time, so, does anyone want to make a motion for the commitment for the amount for the parking lot? And does anyone wanna voice support for putting this off? And it's kind of, I mean, what I'm, yeah, what I'm hearing is that we'd like to continue this discussion with a little bit more specifics around the options, maybe some more specifics from the credit union, maybe everyone has a little bit more time to think about it.
So, from, pretend I'm sitting over there with Andrew and Grant, just timing-wise, so the grant that Friends of the Winuski has to do design stormwater treatment on the campus, the designs have to be final by early August, which means, engineers need to know what they're designing well before early August. And right now, this is definite, if this is going to be paved, this is definitely a priority for design. If it's, if it's gonna be turned into green space, it's a whole other kettle of fish. But it would be, if, if the board doesn't make a decision, you cannot make a decision, and that is fine, I understand that, but if you don't, then we will have to shift those resources elsewhere.
And this is with regard to stormwater projects at Montpelier High School?
Correct.
And what you're saying is, you know, adding, adding a parking lot like this would, you know, incorporate the design of that stormwater system?
Correct.
Listen to that, so, yeah.
Well, so, we have, we have funding to design three interventions, there are 13 opportunities identified on the campus, but if this is gonna be paved, it's obviously a major opportunity.
So, what do you view as the timeline, maybe, Andrew, for when the board needs to make it?
If, hi, if you had said, one way or the other, I would've gone out, written up an RFP, gotten some proposals. an RFP, gotten some proposals, had some preliminary meetings by September to kind of get a sense of where we're heading, give the engineers, we want to be out to bid by January to get our best prices, because we probably bundled this with the work that means we know. So it needs to be, it needs to be soon, it needs to be within the next six weeks, at least, maybe four.
My general, my general thought on this is not one of indecision. My general thought is I'd love to see us try to optimize the space that we have, the SECU and their eight cars, that, you know, that's not, I don't think that that should be a major factor in this decision. And I think we should consider, you know, how could we take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and apply some of it here to create outdoor opportunities for our students and community, and take the rest of that money to enhance educational and recreational opportunities for our students, whether through capital construction projects or otherwise. That's my general sentiment on this, but I understand this is a board decision, and I'm just one component of that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question now? So are you saying so just leave it as money?
No, no, that's not. What I'm, what I'm saying is, use some of the money to turn this into green space that can be used for any number of recreational opportunities by students, by the community, and take, you know, most of this money and apply it to an area of need for our students.
I was not, I was not coming here just to be clear, I was not coming here trying to find out if you'd be willing to give up all your fund balance. This, this was just for this project. I mean, I think it's great to have fund balance, it bails us out a lot. So I was not looking for ideas on how we can use up our fund balance, just to be clear. The three fifty, if that's not what you want to do, that's fine. But we would need a consensus on, are we going with green space, or are we going with paved? Once we know the answer to that, we can come back then and tell you, okay, then this is what we need from fund balance to try to make that happen.
Yeah, and so to be clear, the question before the board would not be what to do with the money if it weren't spent on, the question is parking lot?
I understand that's the immediate question.
But I get right, just to be clear.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
So I have another question that you might be able to answer. Given the wintertime problem with parking, I'd be willing to spend some money to move the snow. And I say that laughingly, but the senior center is a good example of the fact that they plow the snow to the back of the lot, and you lose a whole bunch of parking spaces. And the issue is moving the snow that now takes up the parking spaces to somewhere else. And it probably wouldn't cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is what I'm thinking. Could we solve the parking problem in another manner? I don't know that. You could say to me, no, I know this problem.
This is my first year with regards to the snow management, but I won't say anecdotally again, but according to talking with Tom Allen, I think they, I think the snow management was not optimum this year. I think it has been better in the past. I think we've lost a good six, eight spots.
As well as the weather.
Whether it was, whether it was snow toes, snowstorms piling on top of each other or something, but I think, I, it was a bad, it was a bad year for snow management, that we certainly would be more conscious of next year.
And that's like seventy-five percent of the spots that the SECU isn't using.
So I would, I tend to go with Andrew and do a green space, not do nothing, I think we have to do something. Do a green space, but then figure out the snow and do it better.
So what we have before us, though, is whether, what decision we're going to make under three fifty thousand proposal for paving the parking lot that's currently being used as a mud lot.
Yeah, and this wasn't a consent agenda item, this was just something that I was suggesting you would make as a motion.
I appreciate that.
So, I mean, we could change the proposal on the fly. I mean, if, if the consensus is green space, then I could, I could say, well, how about increasing the committed fund balance by fifty thousand dollars to three hundred and sixty-four? That would allow us to go down that path, and it might be enough, it might even be more, because you know what happens? If we don't use all the money, I come back and say, we're going to give it back to the fund balance, because we need it all. So if you said fifty thousand and we wanted green space, we could start marching down that road, see where, how far we get, and if for some reason fifty isn't enough, it might be. If fifty is enough, I could come back and ask for more. If fifty is too much, I would give it back when the project is done and say, hey, it only cost us thirty-five, so I'm asking you to put fifteen back into uncommitted fund balance, which I've done in the past with the projects.
My reservation sets a lot of money for not really knowing what else might be on your list as priorities. And it's just being kind of sprung on me tonight, I don't know.
The parking, the full amount for the parking lot.
Yeah, the full amount for the parking lot to want to make a decision on tonight, when I really.
It's hard to prioritize it because it's on our, on our, because we thought it was already getting done.
And then, yeah, we were ready in our heads with the credit union doing so much, at least in my opinion.
So were we.
And so I know this is a bit of a surprise, I just.
And to me, the, and maybe this was the, kind of the lazy way out, to me, instead of trying to figure out where it fell into priorities, because we already have looked at all those priorities.
Sure.
Instead of trying to squeeze in there and see where the dominoes will fall, the idea was, well, we've got the fund balance, we could just not mess with priorities at all, and just take care of it out of fund balance, no, no foul. But three fifty is a big number, and if we wanted to do green space, we'd all afford green space. I, I will tell you, there are, there are times when there's no parking.
Oh, I know, basketball games, music, stuff, all the time, all the time.
Plays or performances. But like Andrew said, if you build, it's like storage, you know, if you build more, you never even have enough. So I'm not a, I'm not advocating one way or another, but I am advocating that we decide one way or the other, if that makes sense.
And I would encourage the board to think about what we talked about earlier. Andrew pointed out that when you take something away from the community that they view as theirs, which I would argue that that's something, I bet this parking lot would be falling to that.
Yeah.
Will you have a major?
We care about it, for sure.
Yeah, a major challenge with the community. And again, and I'm kind of with these guys, I just want something done with it, because I don't like my two major jobs up to school, and that's the worst thing to say.
I mean, I would say that I'm a little bit concerned about the six of us that are here, well, actually, it's five, because we're still abstaining, deciding tonight if there's not going to be parking there anymore?
Yeah, I agree.
So although we have a full schedule on the retreat, I mean, we do have a retreat in two weeks, so we have a chance to warn this one issue, to make the final decision. And it sounds like that works with the timeframe, June nineteenth, does that, do you get a final decision, one way or the other?
I can, I can in that time period mark up a drawing and get it to ECI, as Joe's very helpful, and it won't be anything you're going to want to, you know, Grant's going to come back, and he's going to add thirty percent to it and say, if we, if we're over, we'll give the money back. But I think we can issue at least a better sense of that, because if I'm totally wrong and the number comes back at two hundred and fifty, that might change people's minds. If it comes back at fifty, it may change some minds.
I think that information is important, I also think the opportunity for interested people to weigh in, in between now and then, putting out the fact that this is under consideration, we're ending that as a parking area? We shouldn't hear from the community, we should hear from teachers.
People have strong opinions both ways.
Yeah.
I think we should have some opportunity for those to be aired, and then we'll make the decision.
I think, I think, though, that it would be, the, what we're talking about here, what is under consideration is not to leave the mud lot. What is under consideration is to turn this into green space that can be used for recreational purposes by students, by the community, or to do a hybrid where you have recreational space and you have a forty-car parking lot, roughly. And those are the two options that we're considering. We're not considering doing nothing at all. That's my understanding, so that's.
Is everyone okay with putting this off for one night?
One last piece that, it was a bigger concern, one of the larger parking lot, but there is a safety issue. You have public parking on your property that you can't really see. We're planning, we're hoping to get a camera out there, but you've got.
What do you mean, you can't see? I'm sorry.
Well, most people, when they're coming into the parking lot, the majority of our parking, go back, goes past the high school administrative office, and there it's, there's a lot of passive eyes out there, my office, the bees' office, you know, we kind of look out there. That's, that was one of the issues that was raised when it was a larger lot. It's still, it's less of, it's less of an issue when it's smaller, but it's still an issue. You've got a public coming in and using your lot, and you don't have much supervision of it, and you don't know what's going on.
The other piece we were warned about is too much vegetation.
From the police chief.
Because they can't see from that road.
Oh.
And provides hiding spots.
Plus it's plenty of acres when it's all sweet.
Fruit trees that are separated, kind of like on the state house lawn, kind of thing.
Put top seed a little work.
I did want to say to the both of you, this was a logical conclusion from where we had been before, so thank you for doing this. It's just that before, we thought somebody else was going to come in, pave this, pay for it, and they want it, and we never really had this discussion before. It's not your fault.
I'd love to see a picture of what that, what that was the first year it was put in, because I can guarantee it was twenty feet shallower than it is now. And every day, it creeps further and further.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
So if we don't do something, the whole fun is going to end.
Understood.
So I appreciate your time, I'm sorry to spring it on you, but I'm glad at least we're having the conversation, and I appreciate that you're taking it on and us knowing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Summer dates, so folks can get these on their calendars. So June nineteenth is a full day, just so everyone remembers, starting in the morning, full-day retreat. Grab, right, nine o'clock, yeah, till?
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock. Yep, lunch provided.
Tina got the historical society for us.
Oh, great.
You did?
Thank you, Tina, that was a nice space. There are many problems with all of the other normal.
Indubitably.
Oh, okay, oh, right.
There's many problems with all of what would be the normal summer meeting dates, including a wide range of vacation, and one of them would be July third, which of course we can't be in Montpelier on July third.
Isn't that sacrilegious?
So the proposal from the chair, vice chair, and the superintendent is three meetings this summer, July twenty-fourth, August fourteenth, and August twenty-eighth.
July twentieth. Can you say this one more time?
July twenty-fourth, August fourteenth, and August twenty-eighth.
And all of those would be regular, starting at six-thirty four.
Right.
If August twenty-ninth is the first day of school?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, it is.
So they'll go out to the whole board, some people aren't here. By email, too, but that's the plan. And if, after this meeting, many people can't make them, I mean, please, I would say, we don't need to do it right now, but like, we'll put it out in an email to the whole board, and then if, if you can respond about your availability, if it turns out that those dates are impossible, of course, they'll have to be revisited.
Which of, do we know which of them will be in Roxbury?
Well, since we are doing a whole new schedule, and it's supposed to be the nineteenth of June, was supposed to be the board, the Roxbury Board meeting, but I think what we were talking about today is just have a full-day board meeting and then not have it in Roxbury, so it would make sense that the first board meeting in July there starts out in Roxbury.
Roxbury, the twenty-fourth in Roxbury.
How far of a drive is it from Roxbury to Middlebury, Ryan?
It depends on the time of year and which gaps are open.
Summer, summer.
It was summer.
July twenty-fourth.
Forty minutes?
No, look it up, I'm just, okay.
And that might be, thirty-five, forty minutes. It's not too bad.
No.
Okay. The only other thing left on the agenda is executive session, for which we need two motions. Do we have a motion to find that discussing contract negotiations in open session would put the board at a disadvantage?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?